He's right there.
He's back here on the back.
So I have a migraine, man. You're supposed to be up front. Would you like to come up front, please? You can't see me back here, wearing black and a hat? Thanks for coming. Wes is the grand poobah of the First United Methodist Church, or are we calling the first globalist?
You said it right. Nope, you said it right.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay. Would you mind saying a vacation, please, and then I'll ask?
Sure. I'll do it. I appreciate the invitation. This time of year, Monroe is so fun with the lights and the parades, and so thank you for everything that you do. The thing that I like to watch is, especially with the Christmas parade, which is the biggest thing I've ever seen in Monroe, the next morning, you could not tell that it was ever in Monroe. And so I know there's some people that are working long hours late at night to make Monroe beautiful again, so thank you for those that are doing that. But let's pray. What a special place Monroe is, and you have blessed all of us with an amazing community, with amazing leaders, those that are elected, those that are volunteer, those police and fire, those that keep us safe and healthy, those that are watching over us as we speak, Lord. We lift up our schools, both public and private. We lift up all of our bodies of faith, those that worship you, that are loving you, that are doing our best to make this community better. And Lord, with all the many things that Monroe has to offer, love is probably the greatest thing we can see and feel, as we enter into this season where we celebrate your birth, as we have parades and different festivities all throughout the community, Lord. Keep us safe, healthy, and holy as we serve you, as we serve our community, and serve these great people. Amen.
Thank you. Very well said. Wes is the associate pastor, is that correct, Wes, at First United Methodist Church Monroe? Great congregation, great team, and a great family. Do you have two of the superstars back there, or all three? Okay. He and his wife, both college athletes. I think the boys and the daughter are all following in the footsteps, so super, super fun family. Thanks, Wes. Appreciate it. Call this meeting to order. Let the record reflect, please, that all members of the council are present and accounted for in person tonight. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
A motion?
A motion by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda. This will be the council minutes and executive session minutes from October 11th. The September meetings of the Planning Commission Historic Preservation, Downtown Development, and CVB. I need a motion for approval, please. I'm going to give that one to Ms. Crawford, and I'll give you a second. Is that okay? Motion by Ms. Crawford, second by Mr. Little. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. I do have two proclamations tonight. We have one for a young lady, Lexi Calvert, who was in the pitch-hit-and-run competition. And the other, which will be first, is our Monroe area Lady Purple Hurricanes softball team, just won the region championship. Ms. Crawford, would you mind reading that proclamation, please?
Proclamation honoring the Monroe Purple Hurricanes from Monroe area high school, 2022 Region A AAA softball champion. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2022 Monroe area high school softball team has enabled these student athletes to earn a region championship title, and whereas the winning of the 2022 Georgia High School Association Region A AAA championship brought honor to Monroe area high school and the city of Monroe, and put fear in the hearts of our competitors across the great state of Georgia. And whereas head coach Clint Edwards, assistant coaches Charlie Ray, Drew Hem, and Savannah Schmike, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Monroe area high school were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And whereas the exemplary leadership of the seniors, Grace Maddox and Ivy Harrison, and the extraordinary effort of the tremendous group of underclassmen playing with one heartbeat, the Lady Hurricanes beat seven of the eight teams who made the Elite Eight State Championship, won eighteen of their last twenty-five games, and finished their season ranked number eight in the great state of Georgia. Now therefore, I, John Stuart Howard, Mayor of Monroe, Georgia, do hereby recognize and hardly congratulate Monroe area high school and the 2022 Region A AAA championship softball team on its outstanding accomplishment. In witness whereof, I, John S. Howard, have hereunto set my hand and caused the affix the great seal of the city of Monroe, Georgia, on this eighth day of November the year of our Lord 2022, signed by Mayor John S. Howard, Mayor of Monroe, Georgia.
Congratulations, ladies coach. Come on. Can you come on up? Congratulations, ladies. That is outstanding accomplishment. I'm going to take off the copy and let you have the actual real one, okay? Thank you so much. Congratulations, Coach. Oh, awesome. Thank you, son. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Pass these out in just a little bit. Eli, is there anything that we need to... Anything we need to say? Anything you want to tell us? Thank you, ladies. I appreciate you coming.
Moving next, honoring the 2022 Pitch Hit and Run Champion Alexandria Calvert's proclamation. Whereas pitch-hit-and-run is part of the Play Ball Initiative, which is baseball's collective effort to encourage young people and communities to engage in baseball or softball-related activities, including formal leagues, special events, and casual forms of play. Whereas thousands of kids across the United States of America ages seven to fourteen participated in local and regional competitions for a chance to attend the Fall Classic, one young lady stood tall above the competition. Whereas proving her softball skills and pitching, hitting, and running in local competitions and state and regional competitions, Ms. Alexandria Calvert won the opportunity to compete at Minna Made Park in St. Petersburg, Florida. And whereas Lexi's classmates at Jersey Christian School and teammates from the Barrow Swarm have encouraged and competed to help her prepare for this event. Whereas on October 27th, 2022, Lexi dominated the field to become the World Series Pitch Hit and Run Champion, and I did watch the video, and it was pretty awesome. Now therefore, as Mayor of the city of Monroe, I do hereby recognize and hardly congratulate Lexi Calvert on her outstanding accomplishment. In witness whereof, I, John S. Howard, have hereunto set my hand and caused to be affixed the great seal of the city of Monroe, Georgia, on this eighth day of November of the year of our Lord 2022. John Howard.
Lexi? Now, Maisha was a star at Monroe area on that softball team, which is why she read the first proclamation. She knows I get tongue-tied, so I read only one of them. But that's the signature you really wanted on this ball. Just before we move to the next one, we had no one sign up for a public comment, but did I have someone who might have dropped by and just missed the signing sheet? Okay. As David finishes his signature, Lexi, that ball's coming to you right now. If you want to come up and get it. Thank you again, and congratulations. Moving to new business items, the city administrator update. Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you may have noticed some mobilization by E.R. Snell on the eastbound on-ramp project that's finally come to life over there behind Home Depot from West Spring Street back eastbound onto Highway 78. The contract for the bypass has also been let, so I'm awaiting official word on those construction activities and official start date, but it should be within the next three months, I believe. And then lastly, the biggie hanging over us is the local option sales tax renewal. We're in a mediation process, which is the technical process with the county whereby we try to negotiate with a certified mediator attorney. And that round did not go well, ended in a deadlock still. Unfortunately, the county is holding a meeting tonight, as I understand it, to go ahead and approve their position. It's somewhat of a hardcore tactic, I guess, but if anybody wants to see the city's position on local option sales tax and the importance of it and how it's derived, and what it really means to each and every taxpayer here in the city of Monroe, as I said before, local option sales tax is used each year to roll back your property taxes. And that's not just for people that own homes, it's for landlords, it's for business owners, it's for everyone. So everybody is affected equally from the local option sales tax. Again, that's the one penny that you pay on each dollar spent, and it's just a very efficient way to reduce property taxes. So we're fighting for our fair share. The county has requested far more than the current split of sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent, so sixty-five county, thirty-five for all municipalities in Walton County. They want far more than that. So we're continuing to negotiate. I fully believe in negotiation, good faith efforts all the way through, and we have to have our certificate signed with the Department of Revenue by December 30th, no later than that. So that's what's going on now. Again, if anybody is interested, I'll be happy to provide a presentation of the city's position and just encourage, especially our electives, to continue to reach out to your counterparts over at the county.
It is a ten-year.
It is a ten-year deal, which could be $300 million or more in total sales tax to Walton County.
Are there any questions for Logan? Just to make you aware, the city's positions, county came in with their first position of seventy-four, twenty-six, seventy-four percent of the county, twenty-six, to be split among the cities. The cities came back in using GMA numbers that really got us to... From those numbers should be more like fifty-fifty, but we came in with a good faith effort to just reduce the county's share by half percent or so each year, which would get us down to more around fifty-eight, sixty-two. Then the county came back with seventy-four again. So not a lot of budging on that side. They have their numbers from ACCG, we have our numbers from GMA. They tend to count city residents twice. We'll see where we go from here, but mediation last week stalled out, at least for the time being. Moving to the assistant city administrator update, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, sir. Not sure if I mentioned this last month. I can't remember exactly when we finished. All three of our cemeteries, Rest Haven, Eastview, West Marable, have all been paved or cracked sealed. They look rather nice, better than they have in, I don't know, all the years I've seen them and worked here. At the airport, we had our, I think, 11th annual ESP event, Extra Special People fundraiser. On October 22nd, raised $61,000 for that organization. Just finished our capital improvement plan for the next five years for the airport, which factors in our state and federal grant money, and tried to stretch everything out so that our local share is close to even each of those years, so it spreads out our expenses. I was very happy with that, and then the extra money that we're getting from the federal government for the next five years. Town green is ongoing. As you can see, we are this close to getting above ground, which is what we want to see. The below-ground portion has been a little bit of a headache, some different relocations of pipe and storm drainage and a couple of issues that we've discovered, but we're getting there. Still, I think, shooting for mid-next year for completion date, which will be great. That'll put us into our concert series, and we can perhaps have a few there on the town green. Traffic calming is getting close to an end. The subcontractors for the awarded company came in, replaced all of the asphalt speed tables. They are much, much better. Nowhere near as abrupt on entry or exit, which is what we wanted, what we need. The 2022 L-MIG is done. All the striping was completed about two to three weeks ago, best I remember. And then on solid waste, automated side loader, we've had a little bit of a hiccup. The company that ordered the chassis did not order the chassis. So we have a body for it, we have no chassis. Logan, Danny, myself, sent a fun little email and correspondence back with them, waiting to see what their answer is to come back and make the situation right. So we'll update that hopefully at the budget retreat next Friday and kind of see where we're at. And then at the beginning of the meeting, and I think the gentleman's left made the comment after we have Christmas parades and whatnot, that the town looks like we didn't even have a Christmas parade. Well, that's streets, that sanitation, that central services that hammers that out every year and every event, and they do a great job. And it's just like the upcoming Christmas parade, it'll be the same thing the next morning. It'll look like you never even had anything. And then a couple of dates, November 10th and 17th is candlelight shopping. Then the bike strikes and magical lights parade in Childers Park will begin November 17th. The guys are working on putting the lights up as we speak, probably until it got dark this afternoon. And then Small Business Saturday is on November 26th, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Hearing none, I'm going to come back to you, Chris. Public Works Transfer Station Transportation bid.
Yes, sir. As we'd updated you guys, the last contract that we had with our transfer station hauling out the trash from the transfer station to the landfill was a five-year agreement with Oak Grove, and they managed the landfill and/or the disposal and the transportation. They are only handling the landfill portion of that, and while they went up on that contract, and now we're having to manage the transportation element. So we had to bid that out, which is the first time we've had to do this. So we put out the bid. The bid that came back was for $235 a load, which is approximately about $10.68 per ton based on the average haul from the transfer station to the landfill. So it's a total contract of roughly about $1.2 to $1.3 million a year. That's variable based on how much trash we get, and needed approval to enter into a contract with Attaway Hauling for this service, which is going to be required for us to keep our transfer station open. And then keep in mind, as this rate went up, so will our rates to our inbound haulers, but that will not affect our city residents.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? No, I'll entertain the motion.
A motion?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boys, will the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to Mr. Thompson, deletion of analog signals.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we do contracts yearly with all the broadcast channels, and this year, they want us, starting in January, they want us to add a slew of other new channels. Problem is, we have no space to put them in our cable TV system. So we looked around at four or five different options of how to fix this. It was compression of existing digital channels, which degrades the quality of those channels, or just deletion of all the analog channels, and then spread our channels out across those. You'll get a better quality throughout, and the customers will get a better experience with that. Problem is, you're going to lose analog. Some of the old tube TVs will not be able to get these channels. There hadn't been an analog broadcast since 2009. So those TVs have been being phased out already. So what we're asking for you to do is to allow us to delete those, reorganize the channels, and get that information out and do that right after the first of the year. And we'll get that information out starting late this month and early into December, but actually do the work to meet our contractual requirements with the broadcasters right after the first of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there any questions? Brian? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the deletion of the analog signals.
A motion to approve by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion?
It's just clarification. That means people with older TVs, tube TVs in particular, will need to replace their TVs to keep the service. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct, right, Brian?
I would think the majority of those have been replaced now anyway, I would hope. But if not, we will tell people how to do it.
I had a tube that went bad in 1993, and they told me they wouldn't fix it. They let me go get a new TV, so they're probably pretty much gone.
Those boxes that they made, do they still work?
Yes, sir. We don't have any more, but the ones that we gave out when we did this originally would still work. Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving to old business preliminary plat review at Riverpoint. Logan?
We're going to request the tabling of this one more time. That came from the developer. But we have circled up on a development agreement. We kind of finished it last night, so we'll be bouncing that back and forth with the developer over the next couple of weeks, and probably we'll have it ready for December.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Logan? Could I have a motion to table it, please?
Move to table.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to some public hearings at 1101 Double Springs Church Road Connector. Is Mr. Calendar available?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council this evening is a rezon request from B3 to PCD for a community recreation center. Excuse me. So the request includes a site plan that proposes for basically a YMCA site. This is, give you some orientation, this is on the northwest corner of Charlotte Row Boulevard and Double Springs Church Road Connector. They're proposing to enter the site off one entrance off of Double Springs Church Road Connector, enter their site with associated parking, buildings, sports fields, and an archery range. Just a little breakdown on the screen behind you. The primary facility building will be roughly 44,000 square feet. They're proposing a max building height in this planned district to be 35 feet. Building facade will include a combination of brick and dark gray architectural metals. They're proposing to include 288 parking spaces on the site, and they propose to include several accessories and answer uses on the site, including lacrosse pavilion, sports fields, and such. So their architecture they're proposing is brick and architectural metal, and the planning commission recommendation to council is approval subject to four conditions. There were originally four recommended conditions from staff at planning commission. They amended the third condition with the italicized wording you can see in number three that stated that the cost to be negotiated with YMCA in the future, at a future time. This was in regards to a center turn lane. So the recommendation before council from planning commission is approval subject to four conditions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this rezon? Ms. Gray?
There we go. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Andrea Gray, and tonight I have the pleasure of representing the YMCA of Georgia's Piedmont. Here I've got the executive director, Angie Putnam, got our engineer, Brett McEver, and a number of representatives on the Walton County Committee that have been spearheading the promotion and fundraising for this project. So tonight, we're here asking to rezone 38.19 acres from B3 to planned commercial development, PCD, for our YMCA facility. Here's the location map, which I know you all know, but just for those maybe in the audience that don't. The property is located at the corner of Charlotte Row Boulevard and Drake Drive or the Double Springs Church Road Connector. It's just north of the Monroe Pavilion Development, where Publix is located, and just south of the Monroe area high school development, and also centrally located on all of our major highways running through the county. So the perfect location for access for all of our citizens. The current zoning, again, is B3. It's surrounded by many other properties zoned in the same manner, B3, R1A, and then just south again is a PCD zoning for the Monroe Pavilion. The property is currently in the corridor design overlay district, which is one of the reasons we're seeking a PCD, because some of those requirements don't fit with our site plan, which I'll get to in a minute. The uses, which Brad went over, are numerous. It's going to be an incredible facility for this community: soccer fields, box lacrosse, tennis, pickleball, playgrounds, a walking trail, archery pavilion, and of course, the main facility, the main building, with the competitive swimming pool and other features. There's four buildings proposed, as Brad said. The main building is the 44,000 square feet. DNR is going to design and pay for the archery facility, and then the box lacrosse is more of a pavilion-type facility. And then once we have the fields up and running, we'll also be adding a field house to support those uses. Here's representative renderings of the inside of the main building. It shows, of course, the competitive swimming pool lanes, the basketball gym with indoor walking trail, and then the entry area with the administrative desk. walking trail, and then the entry area with the administrative desk. The interior footprint of the main facility includes 16 different uses, and again, you know, the basketball court and the swimming pool take up the majority of it, but then there's also nursery areas, locker rooms, warm water therapy pool, exercise room, and other supporting uses within the facility. The buffers will meet all state and local requirements. Because there's a stream that runs on three sides of the boundaries of this property, there will ultimately be 75 feet of impervious buffer along each of the sides, and so that is also a wooded buffer, so our adjoining property owners will not be disturbed because of these additional buffers around the stream. The site setbacks are substantial. On Charlotte Row Boulevard, the building will be about 285 feet off the road. On the Drake Drive side, it'll be 323 feet. This is a variation off of the corridor overlay requirements, which is more of an urban design, requiring that buffers be 70, or setbacks be 75 feet or less, and I'll get into that more in just a moment. The lot coverage, as you would expect, because of the nature of this, very little impervious surface here, 82% pervious surface, with majority of impervious being mostly landscaping. The design, as Brad mentioned, is meant to echo the historic feel of our mills here in Monroe, with the brick accent, the metal, the large square windows, flat roof design. So it's a nice complement to what we already have in Monroe, and kind of extending it out to the outer areas of our city. Here are the materials that we're proposing to use. Again, the brick, the architectural foreign metal wall panels, and again, the black metal accents on the windows and then on the portico. The building elevations are very attractive from the road. It's a variation in height and design, and so it's not just a, it's not just a brick box. It's a very attractive building, again, that echoes some of the historic tones that we have in our city. The lighting will meet code requirements, which in the parking and grounds area are no more than 20 feet in height with downward facing lights, and we will make sure that we meet all the illumination requirements there. On the sports fields, those will be lighted so that we can have better use of those throughout the year, but we're agreeing, obviously, that the lights be shielded, as seen in this picture here, so that we make sure we're not disturbing our neighbors and adjoining properties while we're having games. Signage will comply with all ordinance requirements. We're anticipating a sign at the entryway by the road, and then a sign with the Y logo actually on the building, and then possibly some directional signs throughout the facility so that people know where to go for each use. The fencing will comply with the ordinance and actually be a little bit upgraded on the playground area with ornamental steel, and then, of course, the black-coated fence for detention ponds, and the tennis court and pickleball courts. Utilities, we will be relying on you, the city, for all of the utilities to serve this Landscaping, we have a detailed landscaping plan that was submitted in our application. The main focus of it is along the 25-foot buffer along both roads, and that is where we'll be planting oaks, hollies, and elms. And then dispersed within the parking areas to create some shade and visual interest there, we'll be placing crepe myrtles. And that plan is hard to see here, but it is in much more detail in your application book. The site will be owned and operated by the YMCA, and all roads within it will be owned and maintained also by the YMCA, so nothing dedicated to the city from within the site. So I mentioned earlier in my presentation about a variation from the corridor design requirements, and this is why we're asking for the PCD zoning. And the two components of that are, one, the parking location, and, two, the setback requirements. So our plan shows the parking being towards the road, and parking, then building, then athletic fields. The corridor overlay requires that the parking be behind the building. Likewise, the setback on the corridor requires that it be 75 feet or less to the road, and here, we're requesting significantly larger setbacks. And the reason for that is, well, many reasons. One is safety. We want to make sure that the fields where the children are playing are as far from the road as possible, and so we've layered the design that way. We also want to make sure that any cars, you know, people's property that are parking in our parking lots are protected from any rogue balls that would be coming from the athletic fields. And so, again, that is, the basis of our design is really safety. We also had some grading, or grade variations on the site that made this layout work better, and this is really what standard YMCA developments look like with the parking in the front and setback from the road for safety purposes. So these variations under the PCD zoning really benefit both the community and the YMCA development. You know, in addition to the safety, which is obviously the chief concern, it maximizes the athletic space by, you know, the layout that we've proposed. It's consistent with other YMCA facilities. It's consistent with the kind of less urban design of what's already in the area, including the high school and the Board of Education building. So we really think that design is a better fit for the use that we're proposing. So with that, the planning commission did vote, as Brad mentioned, to approve our PCD zoning with these conditions, and I'll just go through them one at a time. The community recreation center is the limited land use, and we're completely fine with condition one. Number two, that the materials that we show in our pattern book and that I showed you here tonight would be what we use on the facility and any expansions, and we are great with that. I'll come back to number three. Number four, the downward facing shielded lighting on the fields and in the parking lots, we're fine with that as well. On condition three, regarding the center turn lane, at the planning commission, we requested that it not be included as a condition, and that was because it came as a surprise to us. We had not heard about that until about two days before the planning commission meeting. And the reason we asked that it not be included as a condition at that meeting is because we hadn't budgeted for it, and we hadn't scheduled for it in our construction schedule. And as you know, this is a nonprofit community project, and so those two things, schedule and budget, matter. They're very important. So the planning commission did soften it a bit on the funding portion, and as you see here, in their wording, said that the funding would be worked out later. We've had some subsequent correspondence with the city where I understand, and thank you very much for allocating potentially funding to help us with this, which we're very grateful for. But again, just because of the overall budget and timing consideration, we would, again, as we did in the planning commission, ask that it not be a condition, but that we continue to work together towards getting it constructed, but that it not be tacked on as a formal condition in the zoning. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have of me, the director, or of our engineer.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gray? The director, the engineer? How many members do you expect to have?
How many members do we expect to have? Over 7,000, between 7,000 and 8,000, maybe 10,000.
Okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in addition, in favor of this rezone? Is there anyone here who would be opposed to this rezone? That being said, or unheard, anyway, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll be back to revisit, revisit in just a moment. Moving to conditional use, 517 Hill Street. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just waiting for my presentation to come back up. The conditional use permit request before council this evening is for a half-acre property located on the southwest corner of Roosevelt and Hill Street. So what is requested tonight in front of council, the site is zone professional, was developed as a childcare center back in '77, and it was later used as an adult care center, but they ceased operations in 2019. So the six-month window of continuing a conditional use began, and when that time expired, their conditional use on their site, as they had it, expired. So the request before you tonight is to, basically, to re-up this conditional use for a childcare center. The existing building floor area is 2,500 square feet. There are 13 existing parking spaces on the site. They have two existing entrances off Hill Street. They propose to have roughly two to 10 employees and hours of operation from 6:00 to 7:00, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and they propose to have a number of children under their care, roughly 70 to 80. The planning commission recommendation is approval as submitted without conditions. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public comment or input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the rezone? Or, I'm sorry, the conditional use? Yes, ma'am. And what are your names, please?
My name is Sharon McDonald.
My name is Kendra Carter.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
The name of the center is going to be Exploring New Adventures Learning Academy. The plan is to educate, explore, and to experience. The students will provide the opportunity to get a head start on education. Basically, the center will give younger children a head start on education, being that they're not in school and they're kind of pretty much at home. This will help them to learn and grow, and meet the requirements when they do get into school. Students will explore different ways of learning. Students will experiment with various ways that will help to stimulate their minds. We will serve students six to five years of age. The hours of operation will be from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The center will also have community events such as hosting community egg hunts, fall festivals, winter wonderlands, and turkey giveaways during Thanksgiving. We will also be providing a food and clothing trial that will be there at the daycare, so that parents that may not have, you know, certain clothes, we will be able to provide for the community. Our goal is to provide quality care and education for our future leaders. Now that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming in. Ladies and gentlemen of council, do you have any questions for these ladies?
So you said six months to five years old?
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't, thank you.
I have a teacher to my right, so I figure she's going to be interested.
Well, years of education, so.
Well, thank you, ladies. We may have another question for in a few minutes, but...
And how many children will you serve? Do you have the capacity to serve?
Between 70 or 80. I have my daughter's mentor here, he knows more about it, because he was, he's in the business, and he's her mentor, so he knows everything.
So, but we're expecting about 70 to 80?
Yeah, about 70, 80.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
I'm Mark McDonald. I'm a member of the property.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Mr. McDonald?
I just want to say, the property's been a childcare center since it's opened. Me and my wife bought the center in 2007. We run it ourselves until 2016, when she was killed in a car accident. I decided to close the center. We converted it to an adult daycare center, where me and my oldest daughter run it for till 2019. I closed the center and decided not to reopen it, so we leased the property to these people, and the property is the only commercial property in this neighborhood, and it's really, about the only thing that's really suitable for is a childcare center or adult daycare center.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this conditional use? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit that in just a moment. Moving to new business, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and action about the 1101 Double Springs Church Road Connector for the rezone of the property. Are there any questions or comments?
I did have a question I didn't ask you, Ms. Gray, but if the council does not approve your elimination of the condition of the turn lanes, from a plan, from a construction standpoint, what would that do to you?
I'm going to call our engineer up here with regard to the construction schedule.
If you would come up, please, sir.
If I understand that question is...
What does it do to your construction schedule if you have to put in the turn lane?
Well, it's going to add a little bit of time. We've, yeah, it would add maybe two, two to three, two months, maybe, two and a half months, to get it designed. But we can do that. I think what's helpful for us is if we, if we agree that it be constructed, we can, we can do things simultaneously. You know, we can go ahead and submit drawings to the planning department and kind of get that under our belt, but at the same time, go ahead and work on the planning of the, of the turning lane and how to pay for it, that kind of thing, if that makes sense.
Okay. Then I would ask, Mr. Calendar, I guess, from a standpoint of, from the code department and the construction things, if we agreed with what he just said, to allow those things to go concurrently, does that affect the way things have to happen in our code department?
Mr. Calendar?
I'm not sure I understand the applicant's answer to that question, because the improvements that are requested on the condition would be included on their site development plans that we've yet to receive. So the site development plans that they propose for their development, these improvements could be shown on the site development plans and be concurrent with the approval of the site.
But it's more funding. They're not currently on the plans, so he would have to double back, add them, redesign them into the plans, and then resubmit them to you, which is the multiple-month delay. And from what I understand, and board, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is some critical funding tied to this project that requires that we break ground, like actual break ground, before the end of this year. And so that's what we're, we're pushing towards, is to be able to do that, not to get out of doing a turn lane altogether, but timing-wise, if we could get going with, you know, what we proposed, and like you said, simultaneously work on the new plans that would include the turn lane, that would help us tremendously.
If I may, I think we can offer a compromise here.
Oh, go ahead.
So I believe we could probably subsequently do that as part of a development agreement, if that could be agreed upon tonight, to deal with the turn lane or lanes issue, but go ahead and get your site development plans turned into planning staff, but then, at the same time, can be working on those lanes. So that wouldn't hold you up at all in terms of getting your dirt turned. Does that make sense? Okay.
So you're good with that?
Yeah, we're good with that. We're good with moving forward.
All right. Then, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make the motion to approve the rezone with the conditions as stipulated, and the modification as presented by Mr. Ropes and agreed to by Ms. Gray on behalf of the YMCA.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Dickinson. And Ms. Kirk, when you listen to this tomorrow, he has just done the exact wording, I don't know that I could repeat it all. I'm going to need a second, please.
Second.
Give the second to Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Ladies and gentlemen, I know it has been a long road, and I appreciate every bit of work that you've been doing. Thank you so much. You're one step closer. Moving to the conditional use of 517 Hill Street. If you would like, I'm going to hang on a minute and let you all rowdy bunch get out here. Thank you for coming, Mr. Hobbs. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Bye, Ms. Malcolm. Conditional use of 517 Hill Street, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and/or action. Are there any comments?
Move to approve.
Quick and painless. Mr. Boyce, with the move to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Ms. McDonald, Ms. Carter, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you all so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Moving to final plat approval for Mill Farm Place. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council this evening is a final plat for your consideration. Before council this evening is a final plat for your consideration. This is for a proposed subdivision, or a developed subdivision, rather, on Al Covey Street. This is thirteen lots. They have developed all the infrastructure. They've complied with all the requirements of council and our development regulations. They've submitted all their required bonding and documentation and declarations. And the recommendation is approval as submitted without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Application of beer and wine package sales at East Church Food Mart. Mr. Rosenthal, is everything in order?
Yes, Mayor. Everything's in order on that application.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? You might want to come up, but you can probably just sit down. We'll handle this quick and painless if you'd like.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. I am Sahidul Islam.
I'm sorry, could you spell that for me? Thank you. Okay. I don't think we're going to need anything. Just wait right there. Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you for coming in and I appreciate your, your being here. Moving to the approval of the Chamber of Commerce contract. Mr. Probst?
Yes, we have Terri Smiley from the Walton County Chamber of Commerce to present for the annual operating contract.
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Smiley. How are you?
Hi, good. How are y'all?
Glad you voted.
Praying for a TESPAS approval tonight, so anxious to see those results. I thought that I would offer not to make a presentation. I have one ready, but I thought I would just answer questions if y'all have questions. This is our annual contract. We are still doing the same programs, our community programs, our member programs, small business programs. I'm happy to do a presentation if y'all would like for me to, or if y'all just want to ask me any questions you have, happy to answer those.
Would anybody like a presentation or would you like to ask questions?
I'm happy to waive the presentation.
Anybody have any questions? Glad you're here.
I feel like I say the same thing every time, so we're doing the same programs. But we are, we did manage the TESPAS campaign, so we're anxious to see the results.
Thank you.
Move approval.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Terri. This is approval of the Telecom and Right-of-Way Management Program Agreement and Resolution. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you is a, an agreement between the City of Monroe and GMA, which is Georgia Municipal Association. What this would do is GMA has the capability to recover additional franchise fees and/or tower rents for the City of Monroe that we may not be collecting. This agreement would go through December 31st, 2023 and would be prorated for the remainder of this year. What it does is GMA would provide a full audit for the City of Monroe on any franchise fees that we could be collecting, that we are collecting, to make sure that we're collecting all that we should be. We have, we don't have the capability to know what is in our right of way, what is in our territory. And they do, they can go out and do that. And every city that they have done this for just about has been able to collect additional revenues for them. So we're anxious to see what this, what this does for us. And we only are going to do it for this, through 2023, and then we can see where we stand at that point. And this is just asking for the agreement for this.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Gregory? Sorry, that deep voice over there. A second by Mr. Boyce? Mr. Little. Sorry, you're both throwing your voices tonight. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I'm glad I made it through that without making one more mistake. This renewal of the health and ancillary insurance, Les Russell.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about a health plan for just a minute. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. You've got the information in front of you. I am going to ask Matt Bidwell, who are, is our consultant and broker from MSI Benefits Group, to come up and just take us through a review and what we're renewing. Not many changes in the plan, so this should be a fairly quick review, but I'll be here for questions if you've got any.
Thank you, Les. Good well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Les, and good evening, everyone. I'll go through this and if you could, hold your questions toward the end. I'll be happy to answer any questions when I get done. This time a year ago, when we were starting the review, the changes we made last year, we increased the employees' contributions by 2%. We do offer an employee a chance to get a lower deductible by going through the wellness program. And last year, we had eight, for 2022, we had eighteen employees who actually had no deductible. We had the average deductible that all the employees under coverage had averaged out at $862. And we had thirty-three employees who paid the maximum deductible of $1,750 because they did not meet any of the wellness requirements. And about forty-three employees actually waived the coverage. We, we actually had really good participation and good feedback from the employees on the program. Our medical plan costs in 2022 were projected to go up about 16.58%. And at the time when we were doing this, we changed our specific deductible, which is the amount that we're responsible on any one employee, from $60,000 to $70,000 last year. And we did that in an attempt to get our actual fixed insurance costs lower. Last year, when we renewed our dental plan, we, we have two plans, a base plan and a high option. And on the high option plan, which the, which the employees actually pay for, we increased the annual maximum from $2,000 to $3,000. Division coverage is voluntary and we didn't have any change on that last year. And last year, we renewed our basic life insurance with standard, with no change in that cost. And so that's what we did in 2022. And the year, the year before in 2021, this is a financial chart, which I think has a lot of interesting information we like to point out. The actual claims in 2021 were just under $2.7 million. We had reinsurance, which picked up and paid $334,000 of those claims. And those are signified in the red, the red numbers. So our actual claim liability to the city was $2.2 million. We had about $700,000 in administrative and reinsurance cost. So our total cost in 2021 was just under $3 million to the city. And I want to contrast that to what we're doing in 2022. Through the month of October, our total claims are at $2.3 million, which is about where they were last year. The reinsurance claims, which are in red, if you remember in 2021, those claims paid were approximately just over $300,000. So far this year, it's over $700,000. And we probably still have another couple of hundred thousand dollars worth of claims that are going to be paid under reinsurance for both November and December of this year. So we, we actually had a, we were doing pretty good on the claims until we got until about April, May of this year's. And we started having some large claims start to develop. And those large claims came to a head during most of the summer, June, July, August. We had some very, very large claims hit. And as you can see, as you look at our claim, claims here, the months of September and October, they're starting to come back down to a more realistic level. But this year, our, our claims are running more, a little bit higher than expected. And it's really traced back to several fairly high claims that we had in the middle of the year. I'm going to come over here. This is a boring chart. It's a, it's a breakdown of how the clock works. And if you'd like to know what we're paying for any one specific item, we have it on here. And the big item changing is our specific insurance. And the cost on that last, in 2022 was $527,000. And we were able to lock in to a cost in very early September at $653,000 for next year. And I want to mind you that that reinsurer is going to pay almost $1 million in claims this year. And so we locked in before they could see the full impact of the claims that we were having. And so the, the good thing about that is most of those claims are coming to an end. And so it's, it's not going to hold us back next year, but we were able to lock in to that rate early in September. Had we waited, we think they would have probably raised the premiums quite a bit. On the renewal, there is one item on the bottom. It's in red. It's $150,000 on this chart. And that is signifying a laser. And our normal individual deductible on any one employee is $70,000. And there was one individual that they did look at that they estimate will probably end up with $150,000 or more in claims next year. And so that one individual was given a little bit higher deductible next year. And again, we felt that had we waited longer on this renewal, that number would have probably been higher and we think there would have been more people added to it. So we feel very good about the renewal, that we were able to negotiate on the renewal. And I get outside of the details and I go to a, what I call a little bit higher altitude look. In 2022, our fixed cost was just at $711,000 for next year. That fixed cost, which is the reinsurance and our administrative cost, is going to increase to about $839,000. In 2022, the fixed cost with our expected claims, we were actually expecting it to be about $3.1 million. And remember, the year before, it was just under $3 million. We actually thought we were heading into a pretty good year. And those actual costs for this year are going to end up being closer to $3.5 million. And so for next year's renewal, our fixed and expected claim cost, we think it's going to be closer to a $3.9 million number. And so that's kind of the overall feeling where we're at. The way we provide employees wellness deduction credits, it's a, it's a, it's a number of items. It's going to the health club, being active, your blood pressure, the fact that you're non-tobacco, your cholesterol ratio, and your, your body mass index is a, is a fancy way of saying if you weigh too much. And so the, these, these five items, as an employee improves their biometrics, they're able to take the, the city's $1,750 deductible. They get these credits earned. And then if they earn the maximum amount of credits, they get themselves down to a zero deductible. So we're trying to put the incentive out there for the employee to have a say in their insurance. And I, and I liken it to your car insurance. I think if, I know I drive fast and I get caught. And I know if I have wrecks and I get caught, my insurance is going to cost me more. And so if I take care of myself and I work to get my blood pressure down, I keep my weight in line, I'm doing the things I'm supposed to do. If I do get sick, I don't have to pay as much because I've earned the opportunity to, to get my plan in a, in a position where I don't have to pay that deductible. So we think the risk reward that's presented to the employees is a very sensible one and the employees do like it. So that's, that's what we, we're, how the plan's set up. And in terms of what the employee pays, whether they participate in the program or not, everybody pays the same. So I'm, we're seeing here the current deductions for employees. And you can see the new deductions for 2023. And this represents the employees' annual contributions are going to be $560,000 for next year. So that goes to offset the total cost of the health plan. And then the dental insurance, we have a slight increase on the dental increase, the dental cost. It's going up 5%. And one of the other things that we did on here, we had such good response from the employees going, changing the annual maximum on the high plan to $3,000 last year. For just a few more pennies, we were able to change it to $5,000. And again, that cost is being 100% absorbed by the employees. And we have approximately two-thirds of the employees actually buy the high option. And so this year, if indeed an employee wants to stay in the high option, they're actually getting a much, much better benefit. And I don't know if you've ever had to have a, an implant or if you've ever had to have a crown. It's almost impossible to go to the dentist without spending several thousand dollars now for your dental work. And this affords the employees the opportunity to purchase that additional coverage. The vision coverage is also remaining with met. There was a slight increase. This is a voluntary plan. And an employee who, who does have this coverage, which about two-thirds of the employees do, they will see a slight increase on that for the upcoming year. And then the life insurance, which is $50,000 on each employee. This is provided by the city and the cost on that is unchanged for 2024, 2023. And as a summary, we can see what our, our current Aetna plan, what the, the current total budget was approximately $2.5 million. That's less than employee contributions. For 2022, the actual cost we have is $3,760,000 is what was expected, but it actually ended up being closer to $3.5 this year. And so for next year, we're putting that projection out there at about $3.9, less the employee contributions. We fill the city's net expenditure in 2022, 2023 will be about $3.4 million. And again, the, the dental insurance went up from $82,000 to a net cost of $86,000. The life insurance, and no change on the vision to the city. And so that's my quick summary and I'll be happy to turn this back over to Les. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Bidwell or Mr. Russell?
So on the dental, the current, what will the dental options be cost-wise to the employee?
I'll take you back if I may. Right now, the city, under the low plan, the city pays 100% of the cost of that. And you can see that currently, if an employee, there's thirty-eight employees who are enrolled in the base plan. There's no cost for them. And if they're covering a spouse, the $1,266 is going to $13.30. If I'm covering my children, it's going from $1,280 to $1,344. And for employee and family, it's going from $2547 to $2674. Now, those employees who buy, pay the difference and get the higher option, though the single rate is currently $936, and it's going to $10.30. So it's a, it's a pretty nominal increase. And those employees are seeing an increase in their maximum coverage from $3,000 to $5,000. Yeah.
Regarding vision, one pair of glasses every twelve months?
That will change in this, this new plan, yes. It had been one pair of glasses every twenty-four months.
You know, I, I did skip over that. I apologize. On the vision, we did make a benefit change. And it used to be, when you get to frames, it was every two years, but you could change the lens out every year. We didn't think that made any sense, so we asked them to change the frames and the lenses both to once a year. It's actually highlighted there in green and my bad eyesight couldn't see that, so. I need a pair of glasses.
Are there any other questions? Any comments? A motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Mr. Bidwell, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Moving to the first reading, Mayor and Council Annual Salary Increase Ordinance. Mr. Probst?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is an increase in mayor and council pay, but this will not take effect until the next council is seated, January 1st, 2024. Did a survey some time ago and it showed that in comparable, two comparable cities around the state, Monroe was pretty low, hadn't been adjusted in, I guess, maybe 20 years or so. So what we're looking at doing is taking the mayor to $1,200 a month and council members to $800 per month. Again, that's effective with the seating of the next council, January 1st, 2024. Again, that's effective with the seating of the next council, January 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Logan? Do you wish to have the ordinance read?
I think it'd be good to read that.
I think so.
Please, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of City Monroe, Georgia, to increase the annual salaries of the Mayor and the City Council Members of City Monroe, Georgia. Whereas the City of Monroe, Georgia has been vested with substantial legislative power to adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, regulations relating to its property affairs and local government, for which no provision has been made by general law. And whereas pursuant to OCGA 3635-4, the City Council is authorized to fix the salary compensation expenses of its municipal employees and the members of its municipal governing authority. And whereas Section 2.09 of the City Charter permits the City Council to determine the salary of the Mayor and the City Council Members by ordinance and in accordance with the laws of the state of Georgia. Whereas the city desires to increase the salary of the Mayor and the City Council Members pursuant to the aforementioned authority vested in the City Council, now therefore be it ordained that the Mayor and Council of the City of Monroe do hereby declare and adopt this ordinance as follows. Number one, the preamble of this ordinance shall be considered to be and is hereby incorporated by reference as if fully set out herein. Number two, the annual salary of the Mayor of City Monroe shall be $14,400 or $1,200 per month. The annual salary of each City Council Member of City Monroe, Georgia, shall be $9,600 or $800 per month. Pursuant to OCGA 3635-4, said increases in salaries shall not be effective until after the taking of office of those elected at the next regular municipal election, which is held immediately following the date on which the action to increase the compensation is taken. This ordinance shall take effect January 1, 2024. This constitutes the first reading, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Are there any questions or comments? Another second reading at our December 13th council meeting. Moving to the Speed Zone Ordinance Amendment, Chief Watts. Did you have anything you want to say about it?
Oh, no. What this is, is approval of our streets, renewing our ability to run radar on our streets in the city, and also the addition to streets that we're adding to that.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what I needed. Does counsel wish to have that ordinance read?
Can I ask questions on it?
Absolutely.
How are the speed limits in different sections of streets determined?
GDOT analysis is my understanding.
Yeah, so there's.
If Jeremiah were here, he might could have pined to it. But it has to do with the widths of the street, the classification of the street, is whether they're considered collector, arterial, primary roads. But basically, it's a GDOT analysis based upon both our on system, which are GDOT streets, and our off system, which are iron streets, basically.
I guess, I just tried to go through, looking at some of these. And I guess some of them don't make common sense to me, and I may just be not understanding all the things that GDOT goes through. I'll just give you an example. If you look at Church Street, basically from Broad Street to Hammond, it's 30 miles per hour, which I understand. But then at Hammond, for the next 4 tenths of a mile, we're going to change it to 35. And then that's to Poplar Street. And then from Poplar Street to the city limits, which is another half mile, we're going to move it to 45. So it's going to go from 30 to 35 to 45, all within a fairly short period of time. And after it becomes 45, we hit the city limits, but then it hits the Carver Middle School, so they're going to drop it again for a school zone once it gets outside the city. I just think it's those kind of, and I look at it all the way through, and you see things like that that you just wonder why we're going, you know, for short distance at 30, and then we do a short distance at 35, and then we do a short distance at 40, realizing that right after that, I know it's hours, not hours, it's outside the city. It's going to drop again for a school zone. I don't know. Just, I just.
You guys have the power to amend that, but we have to provide a lot of studies for it. So if you remember what we did on, I guess it was McDaniel Street a few years ago, we dropped that area from 45 to 35 around St. Ops. So we had to submit some studies on that, some traffic studies. It's not impossible to do. We just have to go through the process.
I'm not picky on it.
Even, my granddaughter's driving now, so I'm much more aware of how fast the car is moving. And right in here, it is actually 35 miles an hour. And you're going, she's driving 35, and I'm very aware, that's pretty fast. Of course, usually there's so much traffic, you can't go 10 miles an hour. But with all the pedestrians on the sidewalks right through here up to Marable.
That should be.
Yeah, that's 35. So again, Jeremiah would be the best person to engage in these conversations with in conjunction with Chief Watts. I can just tell you, generally, that particular stretch of road you're speaking of, Ms. Malcolm, is an on system or a state highway. It's going to be a lot more different or difficult conversation to look at speed changes as opposed to the off system roads, which are our city-owned roads. But it does require the studies, as Mr. Probst identified. And if there's any changes y'all want to make, our suggestion would be is you sort of start those through Jeremiah's office since, in conjunction with Chief Watts. Because they do, it does require some work. Y'all don't have the flexibility, well, y'all have the flexibility to do whatever you want to do. If you change these without the proper studies, then it can impact other issues, such as their ability to run radar on the streets, and potentially can affect GDOT funding as well.
This has to be submitted to the state once a year, or is that what?
If we have any modifications.
It has to be, it has to be submitted to the state once a year, and has to be submitted to keep their ability to run radar certificates up to speed and approved by GDOT.
So do we want to just keep an eye on certain areas, and then maybe do a study? And then we come back next year, we would?
You know, and I think I raised the same point last year, but I just would ask, we can approve it and send it in. I'm not trying to picky on it, but somebody needs to take a look and see, does it make common sense to change these things every 400, you know, 4 tenths of a mile or something, you know, and three times in a short, short thing? To me, that doesn't make practical sense. If I got caught speeding in some of that by Chief Watts's people, and when the speed limit's changing that three times in a short distance, I'd probably fuss at that in court, right? You know, I mean, that's, because it doesn't make common sense.
Yeah, so on the Church Street one, just one thing to keep in mind is once it rolls out past Carver and into, into the county, then it runs into a 55 mile an hour zone, so you have to have the proper transition zones. But all that has to be incorporated in the study.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, well, we don't need a motion.
No, no.
We just need a first reading.
Do you want him to read it, or you?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm kind of thinking nobody wants it read. Does anybody want it read?
So we would just get this corrected, and then if we have a street like Mr. Bradley's saying, we could come back and have him do the study.
You have any pain points off system? They're a little easier to do on system. It takes a while. Like when we did Broad Street, and we lowered it, it took about a year to get that through the system.
Which would work out fine for next year, so we'll add to those.
We need to get these approved and the ordinance read.
Okay, we'll have the second, second reading or not at the December 13th meeting.
Just one more question. So what would make the determination of what the assumption should be, 30 or 35? I guess that's.
There's some, there's a lot of technical analysis that would have, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be able to answer it. You can give me a wish list of what you probably want to do, and we can.
But I look at like McDaniel, for example. You come off of Broad, and you go down just past my, Pat, and you go Broad to Pinecrest. You know, it's 30. And then you drop past Pinecrest, down the hill to by my house, it's 35. You know, I mean, it's just, I just wondered, you know, why 30 to 35? I mean, I would say it's not, not right or wrong, not even arguing what it should be. I just ask the question of how that, and maybe it's, like you say, maybe there's some specifics in the code or state or whatever that says this is what you do, but.
Yeah, there's various LOS metrics that have to be hit. Traffic counts, what are your 85th percentiles, so on and so forth, so. If you want a full-on study, we can, we can launch that, but that might be, need to be had at a budget meeting for sure.
Yeah, and let's, you know, whatever roads you see, we'll just get them to Logan and let him get started, probably that way. I'm moving to the second reading, Short Term Rental Ordinance Agreement. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Does counsel wish to have the ordinance read? Hearing no, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items. Ms. Malcolm.
I don't really have anything.
Okay. Ms. Crawford?
No.
Mr. Boyce?
Is it possible to get some more, just a couple more street lights on Mayfield going into Plaza Drive?
Take a look at that, just between 11.
No, 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 when you turn, actually, when you turn on Mayfield.
On May, on Mayfield 2 Plaza.
Right. And that reminded me of something, too.
Mr. Bradley? Mr. Garrett?
No.
Mr. Gregory?
New speed tables are much better, and multiple people have complimented them. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
What's the progress being made on getting these speed bumps straightened out down Highland?
They should be working on it today.
Today?
Yeah, yesterday.
They've been working on it today.
They've been closed.
Yeah.
And the crosswalks are.
Yep.
Yeah, you've got those three raised pedestrian crosswalks that are being worked on now. They're working on two, and then they'll move down and do the other one so they can shift the road, street closure. And then the ones that were repaired and replaced are.
They hadn't done anything yet on the speed bump.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
Yeah. Yeah, they've just got to.
Yes.
Much, much smoother.
Yes.
Okay.
You drive too fast.
They're still not correct then, if that's what they've done.
Keep an eye on it.
All right.
Mr. Dickinson?
Well, I don't have anything to report for the district, but, Mr. Mayor, I do just want to say, how about them dogs? How about them dogs?
Look, congratulations.
Two good games in a row, wasn't it?
Again, congratulations to your, to your boys.
Nine good games, as far as I can tell.
From a citywide concern, not district only, we have a good many street lights out, and the time has now changed. And it is very obvious and more greatly needed that we be cognizant of this and our employees make sure that they are on top of it. Although I think there is a supply issue, or I have been told. But I would like to just ask that we have maybe someone go and.
That was, that's number two on my list.
Okay, do an inventory of what's out, and when can we get them replaced?
All right, number one on my list is Rodney Middlebrooks here.
No, he had a grandbaby.
I know, that's what I was about to say. Charlie Tate Middlebrooks was born this morning, early. 20 and 1/4 inches long, but they didn't tell me the weight. So I think Rodney's new grandpa name is Pop. So congratulations to him. Bikes, Tracks, Magical Lights, I think Chris mentioned earlier, is the 17th. The Magic Makers Gala is Thursday night. The Christmas Parade is December 8th. And then lights, specifically, Logan, in your neighborhood, you have quite a bit, quite a few that are out, so.
There's a couple of bad poles on there, yeah.
So, so, yeah, let's get our guys on those. We need to adjourn to executive session. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm, second?
Second.
We'll give that to motion. Ms. Crawford, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.